If I could have everyone's attention, please. We are trying to deal with a whole bunch of stuff, so we're running a little bit late, and I apologize. Okay. With that, why don't we call the roll?
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Height?
Here.
Corlins President?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I am going to, it's my pleasure, by the way, to introduce Reverend William Robinson with First Baptist Church. He's here wearing two hats tonight. He's gonna pray for us, but he's also here with Valerie Baker, who we're honoring, and he is her preacher. So Reverend Robinson, if you'll come up, and I invite you to stand as we do that and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. God, how we thank you again for the privilege of prayer, and thank you again for another day's journey. Thank you again for you being a prayer-hearing God, and here we are again, asking your blessings upon our mayor. Thank you so much for him and the officials, and those who've gathered here tonight, and those who are in this city. We pray that you will keep each of us well and healthy, keep our city, keep our state, protect our nation. And we thank you again, even for this special night, for Valerie Baker, many others as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm showing one communication. Is that all we got?
Yes, sir.
Move to accept and file. Second.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's go into special call.
Special call from Jason Carter, City Attorney, regarding special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 27, 2016. Honorable members of the North Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 27, 2016, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-16112, a resolution confirming the appointment of Candy Hughes to the Board of Commissioners of Central Arkansas Water. Pursuant to Section 2-48/2 of the North Rock Municipal Code, you are entitled to 72 hours electronic notice of this meeting. All members were notified.
How about a motion?
Tell me. Second.
Oh.
Just a question.
All right.
Is there supposed to be a personal information?
Counsel?
Is there a reappointment?
Well, I don't have this sitting here right here where I can tell you whether one was attached to it or not. I don't know. I'm at a loss.
The resolution we received in our office did not have a attachment.
Okay. What do you want to do, counsel? You want to hold it? Or can we vote on it and amend in the personal information sheet?
I think that we can amend it in. I think one of the important things to keep in mind is that whenever we have CAW appointments, that those appointments are dual appointments. They're not just appointed by our governing body. They're appointed by, you know, they're nominated, and then they're approved by our governing body and Little Rock's governing body.
We're just confirming.
Yes. So traditionally, like when we appoint people to boards, what do we do? They fill out a personal information sheet, they file their statement of financial interest with our city. You know, we maintain those things on file. CW is a joint board. It serves two cities. They handle the appointment process differently.
Well, since Central Arkansas Water has gone through the process of appointing this lady, and I'm sure they did their due diligence, and I'm okay with approving her without a personal information sheet.
Call the roll. We'll fix it if we need to next week.
Okay. R-16112, Mayor Smith, resolution confirming the appointment of Candy Hughes to the Board of Commissioners of Central Arkansas Water. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Billings, are we up and alive on both stations? Excuse me?
Two out of three.
Which two?
Internet and Comcast work on an AT&amp;T TV.
U-verse is not.
U-verse is not up?
It's out.
Are we working on it? Is there a possibility we can get it up next 10:15?
About 10:15.
Okay. All right. I've got some presentations, and Valerie, I'm gonna ask you to have patience, because I want you to go out on all of our TV stations, and one is not broadcasting right now. So I'm gonna go ahead and do some business, and then we'll come back. Okay? Okay. With that, I'm gonna hold PD's presentation, too. All right. Let's just go on into consent agenda. Caitlin?
Okay. Would you like any of the consent agenda to be pulled?
How about a motion to adopt consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor? Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to new business.
R-16106, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 226 College Park Circle in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption. Second.
We'll call a public hearing on R-16106. Anyone here to speak on 226 College Park Circle? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-16107, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 723 West 35th Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on R-16107. Anyone here to speak at 723 West 35th Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-16108, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 709 West 37th Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption. Second.
Call a public hearing on 709 West 37th Street, R-16108. Anyone here? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-16109, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of cleanup lien to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1220 West 13th Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on R-16109, 1220 West 13th Street. Seeing no one, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-16110, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 323 West 20th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on R-16110, 323 West 20th. Anyone here? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-16111, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption. Second.
Call a public hearing, R-16111, grass liens, abaintments of other nuisances. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
I have a question.
Okay.
Have a comment, basically. You know, this is one of the ones, we continue to have the same ones over and over and over on this, that we've done the grass-cutting on there. You know, something I've talked to Mr. Wadley in code about for quite a couple of years now is foreclosure registration fee. And we have these properties, and we don't know what service companies, you know, the banks and the different properties that have been in foreclosure, who they're using. If Mr. Wadley here, because I, he can explain it a little more than I can, as far as, you know, there's companies out there that do this for us. It won't cost the city any money, and they will keep up with who to notify locally. I know we had one in Ward 1 that we, for probably three years, we didn't know. It was just, you know, it was running the whole neighborhood down, and finally located the company. But this service would have done that for us from the beginning.
What she's saying is correct. There is a service out there that does it, and it's no cost to the city. And what they do is they charge a registration fee. The registration fee will be set by the council. Now, there are different companies, do it different ways, but as an example, the service company will charge $100 for the registration. They do all the work. There's no manpower here involved. They search the records, and once a notice is filed by a mortgage company over at the courthouse, that they're gonna start a foreclosure. That's what triggers the registration. So the company picks it up, they call the mortgage company, and advise the mortgage company that we have mandatory registration. And so then they will send the money, they'll keep theirs, say if it's $100, and then the rest of it comes to us.
I was, I thought we were working on that, Jason. Were we not?
We are. Initially, they've kind of got a stock ordinance. I think Tom ran that down to, you know, find kind of the go-by ordinance. It's a substantial document. And, you know, the original thought was it was sort of a plug-and-play, you know, fill North Little Rock into the blanks, and then we can just file it and run. But my review of it is, it's not gonna be that easy. I guess it's never that easy. You know, that's just part of the deal. So it's, is this a good idea? Absolutely, it's a good idea, you know? And it seems like it's even a standard by which other communities are operating, not so much in Arkansas, but outside of Arkansas. It's becoming routine for, a routine method for managing foreclosed homes. So I think it's a good idea for us. It's just, you know, a thing that's gotta be done, and the work's gotta be done to go with it.
And if I could add, it's just not to benefit us. The fire department needs to know that it's a vacant house, because they're assuming it's occupied, but it's not, because the people have moved out. And right now, it's between three and six years to put a new owner in a foreclosed home. And the crisis they're having in Las Vegas is a public safety issue, where people are actually selling a list of foreclosures and the listed owners, and these people are taking those. They're doing fake lease agreements. They're going down and getting utilities turned on, and they're moving in the house. And there's nobody to throw them out of the house. They're just there. And now, they've actually had to do a task force, because they don't know which houses are in foreclosure, so they don't know who has a right to be there, because of the fake lease agreements.
Now, why don't we do this? Why don't you put this on top of your list, and let's say in 30 days, y'all bring us something. Either it's not worth doing it, or a resolution, because I don't think it's a great idea.
One of the things, and I know that Beth and I, numerous neighborhood, you know, meetings that we go to, is the vacant properties. There's nothing we can do about vacant properties, but these properties that are in foreclosure, the vacant properties, we will have a list. We will know which houses are vacant, and, you know, we'll be able, and that way, we'll know if there's transients in that house, also for the police.
And what we're finding now is they're starting the foreclosure process, and they're serving notice, and the occupants moving out. The mortgage companies decided, because depending on who you listen to, it's $30,000 to $70,000 cost to do a foreclosure. They're realizing the house isn't worth what they're gonna spend in foreclosure, so they stopped the proceedings. Then the house stays vacant for years and years and years, in the original owner's name, and we don't know it. And we had one today that caught on fire, and we notified the vendor for the mortgage company, and the next day, they sent us an email saying, "We no longer manage the property." I mean, because there's a fire, they dropped it. And so now, we're left to tear it down.
The one that we had, and ours, you know, that took a couple of years, and it was really bad, you know, eventually, we did locate the company in California, and they had a service company here that was supposedly supposed to be doing the work, and they didn't know that the company here wasn't doing anything. So once we contacted them, that service company was out there the next day, and they cleaned the property up. But we had to look at that for over two years, anyway, of that. So this is just, I brought this up, because I want to move this forward. I mean, we've been looking at this for quite a fine time.
Does this go beyond yard needing to be mowed? Does it?
Yes.
Does it go way beyond that?
I think it's just primarily exterior management.
Right.
I'm talking about their backyard, too, you know?
Reinforce backyards now. What we're learning in the foreclosures is the neighbors are mowing the front yard, and we never know the house is vacant, and they call and say the backyard hadn't been mowed in two years. But we didn't notice it, because the neighbor's been mowing.
What about, what about those that are, I got one next door to me, that they hadn't blown their leaves in five years, you know?
There's no requirement.
No, it's not in foreclosure. They just abandoned it. It's not in foreclosure. You know? And, but there's, I dealt with several foreclosed houses when I was managing Overbrook. And Tom and I have had this discussion many times about, you know, what can we do about it? And, you know, we were powerless in forcing these financial institutions, these mortgage companies, to keep the property clean. One financial institution sent a guy around once a month to mow the yard across the street. Well, they weren't even watering it. There was no grass to mow. He'd take a picture of it, and get paid $125, and he'd drive off. You know, and, but, they didn't even touch the backyard. He said he wasn't paid to do the backyard.
Well, we, I mean, we have a lot more tools in a foreclosure than we do a bankruptcy. So if we can find out that they're in foreclosure and not bankruptcy, then we can do work, we can record liens. If there's a bankruptcy, then our hands are really tied. So I think this is a great idea, and if counsel says that we can do it, I think we all want it. Ms. White?
Just wanted to address Mr. Height's question. In this one house case, it wasn't just the grass. It was neighbors piling their trash in front, and permanently putting it there, all kinds of stuff in the carport, and you didn't know which neighbor was doing it. And it was a, it was a mess. It really was.
Well, there's a couple or three of those in Overbrook, I assure you. And you and I have had many conversations about.
Right now, we estimate there's 300 houses in North Little Rock that are in some type of foreclosure.
Ms. Ross?
I just want to say, this is, I mean, this is not the cure-all end-all, but, you know, if we can take one little bite out of that elephant, that that's gonna help you. Like, we've got one here on this, you know, JP Morgan Chase National. Who do you call it, JP? You know, Morgan Chase National. But this company would have that information for us, and they could give us the local company. So I say, let's do it.
Okay. Is 30 days enough time for us to?
I can at least give you a status report. I don't know if we can get across the finish line that quick, but we can get some kind of status report on it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's go back to presentations.
We didn't vote. We didn't vote.
We didn't vote?
No.
We have a motion. We just need a vote.
Let's vote.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
You know, it's an honor for me to make a special presentation, especially when they're friends of mine. And both the ladies that we're honoring tonight, I've known for 27 years, I think. Linda and I, so Linda Marshall is our Assistant City Clerk, and has been for 37 continuous years. She's worked under Mayors Casey Lehman, Terry Hartwig, Patrick Hayes, and myself. She received the prestigious Certified Municipal Clerk status from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in 2000. Whereas she is dedicated to her family, her church, her community, as well as the city clerk team, she is a wonderful friend, and that's true, mentor, and public servant. So it's my pleasure to announce today as Linda Marshall Day. Actually, we're gonna reclaim July the 15th. That's your final day on payroll, anyway. And it is signed by me and Diane Whitby. Linda, if you'll meet me out front, I'd be more than happy to present this to you. Hold that right there. 37 years. You've done a good job, and we're very proud of you. Thank you very much. Now, it is my honor to make another special presentation tonight to Valerie Baker. Valerie went to work for the school, the Parks Department, in 1986. And in 1988, January 1st of 1988, she became the first African-American female firefighter in the city of North Little Rock. She eventually left there, went back to Parks, and then left the city in 1993, I believe, moved to KEO, and became a city council member in KEO. So she knows what some of the things we go through here. But Valerie and I have known each other since I went to work here in 1989, and I'll tell you, she is a special lady. And it is my honor tonight to present this plaque to Valerie that recognizes her as our first female African-American firefighter in the city of North Little Rock. Valerie, if you'll come up, please.
I'd like to thank the city of North Little Rock. I'd like to thank all of my friends, my pastor, the people that supported me then and now. My banker's here, you mayor.
Your banker?
The counselor.
We want to get a picture with the firefighters with you, too, here, Valerie, if that's okay. Yeah, one of our group, Captain? You got that? Get out of the picture.
Congratulations.
Okay. I think we can get back to ordinances now. Is that where we are, Caitlin?
Yes, sir. O-1638, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the Non-Uniform Employees Policy and Procedure Manual, declaring emergency first reading.
That motion to suspend the readings? How about a second?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Unless anybody has any questions.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
O-1639, Mayor Smith, for consideration only.
I'm gonna hold that.
Okay. O-1640, Mayor Smith?
No, that's Alderman Ross.
Alderman Ross.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a car lot in the C4 zone for certain real property located at 3809 Hobby 161 in the city of North Rock, Arkansas.
Miss, suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Question, Mr. Baxter?
Most of the time, we have hours on this. Did I miss it in here?
I don't, no.
I shouldn't say most of the time, frequently.
These are the, and, well, Mr. Spencer's here, so I'm gonna stop talking.
Frequently. So sometimes we do, it was not brought up at Planning Commission, so none of the neighbors came, or there wasn't anybody to bring up that issue, so that it wasn't an issue to the neighborhood.
You know, I do have an individual signed up for that legislation, and I overlooked it. So let me stop right there. Joseph Kim is here to speak on O-1640.
He's the applicant.
He's the applicant? Okay. Hold on a second. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kim?
I do. I was gonna do before we voted.
Come on forward, Mr. Kim.
You know, I gave Mr. Kim, you know, a copy of this before the meeting, and I spoke with him on the phone, also to make sure that he's in agreement with everything that was in there.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as hours, we normally do put hours on there, and are there, what hours were you thinking?
Monday through Friday is gonna be from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday will be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Till 4:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make that amendment. We'll mend that in, if that's okay.
Okay. Did you get that, Caitlin?
Yes, sir.
So that's okay, because we'll add that, you know, it'll be on another, all those conditions that's tab, that'll also be in that condition.
Yes, ma'am. It's okay.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion to amend?
We need a, we need a second.
Mr. Baxter?
Okay. On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay. How about a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Say it. On the motion?
Can I clarify something?
Yes, you may.
So if I'm correct, what the amendment was that just passed was hours of operation are from 9:00 to 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Monday to Friday?
Monday to Friday.
10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday?
10:00 to 4:00, okay.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday?
We did not establish hours on Sunday.
No.
No, sir.
Closed on Sunday.
Sunday's closed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I do have one more question, too, though, for Mr. Kim. I know it's after the vote, but I just want to make sure that was all worked out.
Yeah, come forward, Mr. Kim.
At the Planning Commission, there was concern with the church next door, as far as cars parking there, but then I understood that cars from the church was also parking over on your side. Was that all, I know that y'all said that y'all would get that worked out, so was...
Yes, ma'am. He was worried that I was gonna park on his property and stuff?
Right.
To sell cars, but I'm not gonna have the inventory that Darryl Adelsberg used to have, because he financed cars, and I'm just doing cash cars, so.
Right.
I know my limit's up to 32 cars, and it's 450 square foot.
Right, a car per.
And I'll probably have a minimum of like 20 to 22 cars on a lot, but like I said, it's just cash cars only. It's not really expensive cars, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good?
Yes, sir. That concludes new business.
Okay. I think we're ready now. Chief, do you want to lead us into this video we're getting ready to watch?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We might watch it first.
Yeah, I didn't push that button.
As you know, we just finished our first summer camp, youth camp, at 4H in Ferndale. We had a total of 17 young men and women, and 15 officers who participated in the event went over three days, and it was a huge success. The city council gave us almost $7,000 to do this, and I'm very appreciative of that. And we had donations also. They, the city gave us $5,800. Walmart, Sam's, Target, Edwards, Kroger, Jenkins Enterprises all participated as well, and we had a lot more that we're lining up to help. We had our final night, Wednesday night, I believe it was, and Mr. Baxter, Ms. Ross, Ms. White, Nathan came out for that, in your absence, and I think they were all pretty impressed with what happened. Next year, we're planning bigger and better. Next year, we're planning bigger and better and we can do it easily. Really, we could have done more this year, but we just weren't real sure. So, but the kids were great, the people out there at 4H said it was the best group of kids they'd ever had. So, and I'll say, the best group of officers they ever had were out there as well.
Great.
It was about a three-minute video, I think.
Three-minute video?
Yes.
Okay, push the button, guys.
First half of it was even better, and I'll make sure y'all get a copy of that, but I wanted y'all to see, and there was a picture at the last of all the kids that were there, so it worked out great. So, thank you, guys, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate you and all your officers and the job y'all do. Ms. Ross, Ms. White?
I was just going to say that watching the police officers that were there and all the staff with the children was amazing, and I can see why it was a good camp because it kind of started from the top. Y'all did a great job.
That, I just, I guess kind of basically what, but, you know, I was kind of, everybody were kind of ahead of me and I was talking to a couple of the interns that worked there, the one that did the programs and everything, and the thing that impressed me most, everyone bragged about, this is the best group of kids that they've ever had out there. And then the intern, you know, she turned to me and she said, this changed my whole perception of a police officer, and I think that was, that was huge.
That's what it's all about.
That did to a grown-up, and I know it did to those kids.
Mr. Baxter?
Oh, it was great. It was great, just interacting with the young people. So many of them, Mayor, got to do things that they have never done before, rock climbing, kayaking, shooting a bow and arrow. It was just, just phenomenal, the stories that they shared with each and every one of us. So, thanks to the police department.
You know, while we're talking about happy things, Saturday, we had our third annual airshow, and it was even a bigger success than the ones, the two before. I ain't got the final count, but we're guessing that there was approximately 7,000 people that came. We were prepared, we were organized. The leader of the airshow came up and told Chief Murphy that he had never seen anything more professional than our firefighters that were out there that were preparing for Saturday. We met out there on Friday and they knew each plane, they knew how to get the tops off each plane if any of them crashed. It was really heartwarming for me to see that these guys were really into their job and they really wanted to know, in the event that something happened, we'd be ready. Police department, of course, was the same. Public Works, you know, everybody worked really hard. Clay Rogers, our airport director, unbelievable job, Clay, if you're happy to be home. And I'm, I'm going to tell him in person that he put that thing together with not a whole lot of help from staff. So, great job, professional job by Clay and all the people that worked on that. So, with that, we're into public comments and, you know, speaking of professional people, we have a public figure that's going to make some comments. Remember, this is only going to last three minutes, but Dr. James Arden and his nurse are going to make a presentation. Dr. Arden, please come forward.
Ms. Marshall, could you join me over here, please, or do you want me to come to you?
I'll come to you.
37 years is a long time to work and has to put up with the public, especially when the public makes the employer mad. And she's done a great year. She even goes beyond the call of duty and looks stuff up that's not even her duty to do. I know, because I got her to do it for me. Okay, the North Little Rock, Neil wanted me to give you a physical to see if you was ready to retire, so let's check her pulse. It's real simple. And see my hand? How many fingers am I holding up? She's supposed to say one, and I could say she done flunked the test, but she's pretty smart. Ah, 99 and 106. Little high, but no problem. Mine's higher than that. So, do you think you need any medicine or anything to help you get through this? Well, we do. Where's my bucket? We, we got some pill, a bottle for you, and we hope you enjoy what's in the bottle. You know where it is? Now, that's, to get it refilled, you got to go to Mayor Smith, and then he has to go to the council, but that's for you. We wish you the best. You take care.
Thank you, Doctor, very much. Mayor, can I ask Dr. Arden one question? Sure you can. Where'd you get that green hat?
Very good question, council member. It seems if you've never done an occupation before, some of the companies make you wear a green hat to show you a green horn. And I've never performed surgery yet, only except on this book right here.
And you did a great job and you didn't lose any, any patients and, so, we appreciate you, Dr. Arden, and, you know, we, we know somebody that's kin to you, his name's Jimmy. Y'all related?
Well, we were the last time I looked at my driver's license.
Tell Jimmy we said hi and hope to see him back next week.
Thanks for letting me do this.
A lot of fun, Linda, thanks for being part of that.
Thank you.
Okay, any council members have anything? Ms. Robinson?
Oh, I just need to see someone from the fire department.
All right, Chief, after the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Robinson wants to see you after the meeting, Chief Serrato, okay? Anybody else?
Oh, Mayor, I'd just like to say, in case anybody happened to notice, that one airplane out there with four engines had a little Arkansas across the tail on it. Yes, I've turned some wrenches on that, but some of the feedback that I heard from the crew who took that out there and were with it for Saturday, just thought it was great. They really enjoyed the crowd and thought that we've been over backwards for them, so.
A lot of fun, a lot of fun, and a lot of good people and good family atmosphere out there, and again, we thank Clay for ramrodding that. How about a motion? Second, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.